Good evening, and I'd like to welcome everyone to the February 11th, 2020 City Council Meeting, and the first order of business would be the roll call.
Bartlett.
Here.
Boersma.
Here.
Caravelo.
Here.
Doom.
Here.
Hailey.
Here.
Hirsch.
Here.
Jensen.
Here.
Legaki.
Here.
Mieske.
Here.
Reeves.
Here.
Riley.
Yeah.
And I believe Schumacher is on his way.
That's good.
Okay, thank you. Are there any communications from council members this evening? Alder Person, Hirsch.
Yes, I'd like to announce that next Thursday, February 20th, at the Lagarette, which is at 515 East Main Street, Sustainable Stoughton, which will be sponsored by Stoughton Utilities down there with Jill, we're putting on a big renewable energy educational kind of forum to talk, get everybody up to speed of what the city is doing with renewables, the programs that are available for businesses and individuals and nonprofits, how to select the right kind of solar installer. There'll be booths there from five or six different companies that talk about solar and different aspects, whether it's the tasks credits or the solar panels, or there's a new foundation called Solar For Good that gives money to nonprofits to put renewable energy on their buildings. Again, it's from six, it starts at 6:00 PM where people can visit the different booths from Stoughton Utilities, Solar For Good, Renew Wisconsin, Synergy Renewable Systems, and Speed Solar. And then at 6:30, there'll be a program with Jill speaking, heading off, along with Corey Neely from Stoughton Utilities and WPPI, and Renew Wisconsin, and Ryan Harkin from Synergy Renewable System, and Cal Collyard from Solar For Good. It's going to be a really informative night of anybody that's interested in renewable energy for their buildings, their homes, their businesses, or nonprofits. And even if you don't own a business or a home, there's other ways that you can get on the renewable energy kind of, I wouldn't say bandwagon, but that's for lack of a better word that I can think of tonight, that Jill will explain. So it's, renewable energy is for everybody, so come and learn, and hope to see you next Thursday, February 20th, 6 to 9:00 PM at the Lagarette. Thank you.
Merci.
Thank you. Alder Person, Boersma.
Yeah, just a reminder for everybody that there, and I know Rodney may talk about this, but there's going to be a public meeting on streets and sidewalks at 6 o'clock on this Thursday at the firehouse, is that correct?
That's correct. It doesn't include any of the Main Street projects, it's the pulverization on our reconstruction projects, Prospect, McKinley, Grant, Sherman, Robey Road, Harrison Court, and Skinner Lane.
So we're hoping for a good attendance from the public.
Okay, thank you. Any other communications from Alders this evening? Just one quick one for me, I want to thank IT Director John Montgomery and Media Services Derek Wesby for the upgrades in equipment here. Hopefully, we'll put them to use and it'll be a better viewing experience for council members in our audience, and then also thank the council for the support during the budget process to get the equipment in here. So we'll get her, we'll test it right now. Any other communications? Seeing none, I'm going to do a quick presentation on Stoughton population. So up on the screen, you'll see the slides that I put together. I have some other slides that I did not include in this presentation, and what I'll do is I'll send out everything to the council members tomorrow. That way you have all the information I've compiled from various sources, and basically I just put the materials together, so you have something to reference as we're talking about population and developments and growth in the city of Stoughton. This map here is basically a map of our comprehensive plan. You'll see that if you go through the plan, it's kind of hard to see on the screen, but maybe once I send it out on your device, you can enlarge it and see what everything is on there. But as we go through conversations, if you have any questions about any of the slides, just let me know and we'll try to answer them for you. So in our comprehensive plan, we have some goals in there, and one of the goals in there is that we'd like to see 65% of our new developments include single-family homes, with the difference being duplexes or multi-unit. And right now, citywide, we're at 63.1%. In our comprehensive plan, community vision, we did a survey, and the highest number of participants, at 28%, said they'd like to see 10% growth in population in the next 10 years. So basically, that would amount to 1% a year, and growth is our goal. This kind of, this slide here kind of gives us an idea of what's going on in the county and what the projections would be going forward, and you can see that in the last, from 1970 to 2000 in Dane County, the average growth rate was 1.29%. And there's a projection that that will be reduced a little bit, and from 20, from 2000 to 2030, so the growth percent in Dane County is projected to be at 1.03, which is consistent with our comprehensive plan. This slide here gives a breakdown of our population history, basically the left-hand side by decade. So when we were founded in 1850, we had 70 people that lived in Stoughton. And what I did is I just went through the census and compiled all the numbers, so you can kind of see where the growth patterns were, and you can see from 1970 to 1980, we had a fair amount of growth at over 24%. And then from the 80s to the 90s, it was 15%. And from 1990 to 2000 was our biggest growth spurt, that over 40% of our population grew. So we went from 8,786 people in Stoughton to over 12,354. And then since 2000, our numbers have really kind of leveled off. So basically, if you go from 2000 until the current, we've grown by, basically, in the last almost 20 years, we've only grown by 5% in the last 20 years. So that's what this chart illustrates. This chart here, what I did is I kind of went through, I received some information for our planning department, and this kind of gives you an idea of the type of growth that we've had as far as our housing units. So if you go back in the early 2000s, we were building 44, 50, single-family homes, and you can kind of see some peaks and valleys. When we went through the recession in 2008 to 2011, we were doing anywhere between five or one or seven or one, single-family startups. In the last couple of years, it looks like we've been averaging between 15 and 30. So we're still not at the level that we were in the early 2000s, but at least we've recovered from the recession. So this one here really kind of breaks it down for the last three years, and then we also included in the specifics, so you could kind of see what type of buildings were put up. In 2019, we put up 14 single-family homes, four duplexes, we had the one multi-unit over on Hole Avenue. And in the previous years, it was very similar, except for we had the Kettle Park Senior Living, that building went up, which is still not at full occupancy. But the charts that I'm showing are fairly fluid, because it's, the charts are built on as the permits are pulled, so the people didn't necessarily move in at the same time or maybe even not the same year as the information comes through the planning department. So our current population is about 13,060, according to the census estimates, and of course, the census are going to be done here throughout the rest of this year, so when we get into 2021, we'll actually have the official number. And so if we were to look at our goal, which is 10% growth in 10 years, we'd be looking at increasing our residents by 131 a year, and the average household size in Stoughton is about 2.51 people. So if you divide that out, we'd have the equivalent of 52, single-family homes a year to be built in order for us to reach our goal, or a combination of single-family homes and a multi-unit. But it's basically 52, single-family homes a year, and I just kind of listed some of the current projects that we know of. This chart here is from the Builders Association, which is kind of illustrates the type of household based on the type of home that is built, and whether it's a single-family, manufactured, or a multifamily. So that's one that you might want to look into a little bit, but you can see that the single-family detached home typically produces the largest families as compared to a one or efficiency or one, two, efficiency or one-bedroom multifamily would produce a lease, because there's just not space to have a larger family in there. So what I did is I did three scenarios, and it'll probably be easier for you to read once I send out the email. The first one really just shows what we currently have underway for development that we know of, and that's Nordic Ridge. And Nordic Ridge is projected to, we've been, they've been building about 14 homes a year, and by 2027, all the lots out there will be full at the current pace. And if we only build out there, we're looking at just less than 2% growth between now and, well, basically, 2027. And then the next scenario, what I did is I added in Kettle Park West, based on the projections. Now, we still have to, you know, complete the approval process, but just to give you an idea, they're looking at doing approximately 25, single-family homes a year, and four quads in a couple of years where they have some duplexes. And that project as well, they would anticipate, under ideal circumstances, to be completed by 2027. And if you add that with what we have developed at Nordic Ridge, we'd be looking at about 6.64% population growth. If you were to add in a couple other projects that are still unknown, which would be the Riverfront, the units on the Marathon site, and then some units that we expect Habitat for Humanity to be building, we would be growing 1,803 people, which would get us to about 13.8% population growth between now and 2027, basically. And then also, when you look at closer at the charts, you'll see that I put a column in there projecting out the number of students that we could expect based on the industry standards. So under the best-case scenario that we have here, the average home, single-family home produces .4 kids per household, and a multi-unit projects out .15 kids per unit. So under this circumstance, we would possibly add 196 students to the school district, and that's assuming that, you know, we don't lose any in the process. So this just kind of gives you kind of something to work with as you're thinking and having conversations. And then I also included some other sites that we have that are either not developed, or they're not zoned, or they're not in the urban service area yet, but these are projects that, you know, could come underway in the next few years. Some of it actually has been annexed since I gathered the information, like the Dvorak property and the Linnaroots as well. And on the next page, these are the ones that are really just unknown of where we could go with them. And I think the idea here is just to understand what we might possibly have in the pipeline after 2027, because if Nordic Ridge and Kettle Park West are on schedule, we have to really, in order to maintain and reach our, continue to hit our goals, we have to be able to have something else coming online here. So these are some examples of potentials that we might see, but there's still a ways out before we know whether or not those projects will come together. Net new construction, I put that in there, and as you know, when we're doing our budgets, the only levy increase we can have is based on our net new construction. And you can see that the Stoughton average since 2013 is 1.31%. This is net new construction growth, which is different than population. The state average is 1.35, so we're right about at the state average. Dane County is at 2.33, so we're behind the rest of the communities in Dane County. But really, the big thing on this chart is, you know, when we're doing our budgets in 2019, for example, with the net new construction at about 1.48, we were able to raise our levy by just under $111,000. And before the state law changed in 2010 and 2011, we were able to raise our revenue by 3%, and that would have equated to about $517,000 last year. So you can really see where the state law is really, you know, it saved the taxpayers' money, that was the intention, the local taxpayers, but it also has created really tight budgets for us when we start talking about adding new positions, or rightsizing, or trying to do some things to improve our services. This is really the challenge that we run up against. The last few slides are basically school district information, and you can see in 2004, the school district had 3,620 students, and now the school district has, well, in 2018, they had 3,202. So you can see they've lost basically just over 400 students in the last 14 years, and previous to 2004, they had lost a couple hundred more students. This one here really kind of shows how much space they would have in the schools if we were to grow. If you look at the bottom right-hand corner, their capacity in their buildings could hold an additional 648 students, which is really unique in Dane County. If you look at other communities that are growing, the Mitteltons, Oregon, Verona and Sun Prairie, they're all building new schools. So we could actually accommodate some growth with young families here without building new schools, which usually leads to, you know, referendums and higher taxes. So we're in a unique position here if we find ourselves in a position to do that. And then this slide here, I think you saw during some of the listening sessions, and what this one does is it illustrates that the way the school district funding formula works, they get additional state aid based on enrollment. So the higher the student enrollment, the more state aid the school district gets, the less burden there is on the local property taxes. So that basically summarizes that. The rest of the slides that I'll send you will be more county and state information, so it'll talk a little bit about some of the goals that we had in the survey that we did with the CARPSY survey that was done last year, and talks a little bit about workforce housing, and jobs, and household sizes, and then school age population. So it's a little bit more detailed than this was, but I want to at least get the information in front of you, so as we're having conversations, we can all have something to refer to. So that's all I have. Are there any questions? Alder Person, Legaki.
Mayor, could you, could you jump back three slides to the bar graph that had the school enrollment?
This one?
Yes.
Yeah.
Just reading the graph, I was very curious about the jump between 2008 and 2009.
Great question. I had the same question. That was when, go ahead.
That's when they added 4K enrollment.
4K?
Yeah.
So the way this school enrollment works is that the state of Wisconsin uses a three-year average, and as Brett mentioned, that was the year they started the 4K, so I think you got, we got a third of the credit for those students that year, two-thirds the second year, and 100% the third year. So I had the same question, and when I was talking to Erica Pickett from the school district, she was like, oh yeah, this is what happened.
Thank you.
But Alder Person, Reeves?
You mentioned sending out by email, will you put this on the website as well for folks that want to take a look at it?
Sure. Yeah. If this is something you want to talk about in more detail at another meeting, we can certainly do that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sure. Anybody else? Alder Person, Schumacher.
I did one back-of-the-envelope calculation while we were going through, or going through the CIP process, and that was based on, you know, annualized growth versus, versus the caps and levies that were set up against. And the kind of an ideal spot is somewhere between about 2.5 and 3.5% to maximize the dollars before you run into the cap.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
That was it. Information only.
All right. Anybody else have any comments or questions? All right, thank you. Minutes and reports are in the packet, and the next item would be public comment. Is there anyone here that would wish to speak at public comment? Hearing none, we'll go on to the consent agenda. Looks like there's four items on the consent agenda. I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. Motion by Jensen, is there a second? Second by Schumacher. Would anybody like anything removed from the consent agenda? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, that carries. We're at ordinance one of 2020, and this is a second reading coming from the Plan Commission. Alder Person, Caravelo.
This is ordinance one of 2020, and ordinance amending the zoning classification of certain lands located within a proposed preliminary plat named the Meadows at Kettle Park West, and outlots one and two in a proposed certified survey map in the city of Stoughton, from RH Rural Holding to SR5, Single Family Residential, MR10, Multifamily Residential, PD-GDP, Plan Development, General Development Plan, and I, institutional, and I so move.
Second.
Second by Alder Person, Hirsch. Anything you want to follow that up with?
I'm going to follow that up with, if that's okay, just giving that straight over to Rodney.
I think most are familiar with the work that's been done in Kettle Park West. This is just the implementation of the zoning strategy that was discussed during the preliminary plating process for this area, and it puts in place the zoning, it does not plat the lands at this point.
Are there any questions or comments on this? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, that carries. R17 of 2020, and this is a request, I believe, from Alder Person, Caravelo, do you want to start this?
After our, well, should I read the resolution first?
Sure.
Way to go. R17 of 2020, sidewalks for the 2020 street reconstruction project, and I would move that we reconsider this.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by President Mieske. Go ahead, Alder Person, Caravelo.
And after our last council meeting, and our considered debate on this topic, I actually was not comfortable with how I voted, because I had not done what I considered to be my due diligence of actually going to that neighborhood and being a pedestrian through that neighborhood. And I would like to bring this back up for discussion once again, because I believe, I think it would be prudent for us to add the sidewalks on that section of Grand Street as proposed in this proposal, basically.
Okay. So as you read in the, in the packet here, we do have a rule in our, in our council policy that says that, and Alder in the prevailing side can bring it back sometime after the vote, before the next meeting, and have it put on the agenda. So the motion on the floor now is just whether or not the council wants to do the reconsideration, and then I guess I'd like to keep our comments to that and make that decision, and then kind of go from there. Alder Person, Riley?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm wondering, do I levy what my thoughts are on this at this juncture with respect to this motion? Is it going to be too late for me to levy my concerns about this if this motion should pass? When should I do that, please? I'd just like some clarification as to when I should address this thoroughly.
My understanding is this vote would be whether or not we want to reconsider. If we don't, that's the end of the discussion. If the council says we're willing to reconsider, then it would pick up at the motion that was approved at the last meeting. Is that how you understand it?
Yeah, the only thing I want to make sure people understand is that if the motion to reconsider is adopted, what will be before the council at that point will be the motion to approve the resolution as it was amended at the last meeting, and that would be before you for debate. It would be subject to further amendment. But the motion that was adopted at the last meeting was amended to, I think, take all the sidewalks out, as I recall. So that's the only thing that's a little quirky about this, I don't want to make sure everyone understands, but Alder Person, Riley, if the motion to reconsider is adopted, then the issue of whether to approve the resolution would be before you, and you'd have an opportunity to speak to the merits of that.
Right. And do I have the opportunity, if I feel important, to speak to that now, so I am getting my thoughts in with respect to whether or not we should be voting in favor of reconsidering some? favor of reconsidering something we've done twice now.
Well, if you believe that it's germane to the question of reconsideration, you're free to make that argument. And then the chair, the mayor, has the ability to decide whether it's germane or not.
Well, why don't I start? And Mayor, if you think I should hold off until after the vote, I'll do so, all right?
Okay.
Thank you. You know, a couple of things. One, this is like a bad horror flick for me. This is like the sidewalks that would not die. This keeps coming back and I think it's unfair and I don't think it's right. I start to wonder, do votes matter in this body? Does the process matter in this body? Because this is, in my mind, it's gotten a little ridiculous, frankly, with respect to this. This is a twenty-plus-year-old. I can speak to, can I speak to the policy or should I just say that and you guys can have your vote and then I'll relieve?
That's what I prefer, but I'm willing to give you some latitude.
All right. Well, I'll speak to, sure. I'll tell you what. I plan to speak to this policy, to the application of this policy in this neighborhood, to the process, to the waste, to the environmental issues that I've already addressed before. And I'll do it in a more truncated fashion because you've heard them. I have concerns about a number of other things that I will raise as well. I guess, Mayor, I'll concede to your approach, obviously, and we'll take the vote and we'll see where we are.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions or comments on the reconsideration? Alder Person Doom?
So if we vote no for this, it'll stay as the way we said it last week, or last?
That's how I understand it.
It would, at least tonight. I also want to make you all aware that, you know, there's nothing that prevents this issue from raising its head down the road again. I mean, just because something is voted on at a particular meeting, there are some limits in terms of when something can be brought back. But it could still be brought back down the road if, if there's time before.
I guess my hope is, is whatever we decide tonight would be it. I mean, I don't think there would, unless something major, new information surfaced between now and, but we're getting to the point where we have to make a decision so we can get the project scheduled. You know, I mean, the engineering, we have a public hearing set, we have to get out for bid. So it's getting to be, you know, crunch time as far as making the decision. So, and I think our council rules say you have to wait thirty days or something before you could bring something back unless it's a reconsideration. So, you know, I think that when it's all said and done with tonight, we're going to have to live with whatever you guys decide to do. Any other, does that answer your question? Okay. Anybody else have any questions or comments? Alder Person Hirsch?
So just to make everybody clear, so if we vote yes, we bring it back for reconsider. If you vote no, that means it's not going to come back for reconsider, for this evening.
Correct.
Just so that everybody's clear.
Right. Anybody else have any questions or comments? Here none. All in favor of the reconsideration, say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed to the reconsideration?
No.
All right. We're going to do a roll call.
Forzma?
No.
Caravelo?
Aye.
Doom?
No.
Haley?
Aye.
Hirsch?
Aye.
Jensen?
No.
Legaki?
No.
Mijeski?
Aye.
Reeves?
Aye.
Riley?
No.
Schumacher?
No.
Bartlett?
Aye.
That is a tie of six to six.
Sorry, Jim.
Mr. Mayor?
I'll vote aye on the reconsideration. So that takes us back to the motion. As Attorney Jargoney mentioned, it would be the motion as it was amended at the last meeting. So the way I look at it, we can either revote on that, either approve it or deny it, or we could make an amendment to that and then vote on it. Would that be accurate? Or could we not amend it again?
It is subject to, amendments are in order. I just want to be clear on, so if the motion is now, if the motion that's before the council is voted on and not adopted, then as I understand it, there'll be no modification to policy and the policy will be sidewalks go in on both sides of the street. That's if it's not adopted. If it's adopted in its current form, then the decision would be to provide for modification of the policy to take all the sidewalks out of this area. And then if there are amendments, we'll see what the amendments are.
Alder Person Hirsch?
So I guess what I'm hearing is if nobody makes an amendment, we're voting on what was already passed that has sidewalks already eliminated. What I'd like to do then is to make amendment to the amendment, to go back to the original resolution where you have the sidewalk on just what was a good compromise for this neighborhood so we have some continuity with sidewalks, is to have just on the west side of Grant Street have sidewalks. And I think that was what we had discussed. It was an excellent compromise for this neighborhood that allows ADA, that allows some movement from one sidewalk area to another sidewalk area instead of the sidewalks ending. It's, it makes for, I realize that there's some trees at issue, but, you know, Director Shiel has stated numerous times that he works directly with landowners to make sure that trees are not harmed and, you know, the old, minimal harm.
We minimize the potential.
Right. Minimize potential. And I've worked with him before and he's done an excellent job. So I guess I would like to make this amendment to the amendment to withdraw basically the first amendment and go back to the original resolution.
Second.
Who is the second by? Alder Person Haley. So just, do you understand, so basically we're just, we had inserted the word, what, nor?
So basically, the motion was to go back to the original resolution to inside, to install sidewalks on the west side of Grant Street.
Right.
Okay. So that's the amendment. So we'll open it up for debate. Did you ever hand up Alder Person Jensen?
Just to add a caveat to that, if Regina's agreed to it, I would like to have that, have you add to that, that the, if the sidewalk that is put in on Grant Street, there's what, basically one and one-third blocks of it, right? There's just a small portion on one block and then the rest of it that would go to the north down to the park. That the project cost would cover the cost of that, that it would not cost anything to the homeowner itself. So I would like to have that included to include the cost of the sidewalk within the project cost.
So you're saying that this neighborhood is special, that they don't have to pay for their sidewalks?
What I'm saying is that I would like to see that as a change in our ordinances and in our policies from this point forward. But that has to go through the process. For this project, I would like to start it. I would like to see, as we go on with we, any development that we do like this, any redevelopment of a street, that those project costs are covered. They cover the sidewalk and the curb and gutter. And I don't think it's, I've always felt that it's not fair to the homeowner to do that. So that, I would like to start it right now with that.
So I guess, so all the streets that are up for sidewalks this year, you're saying that the homeowner should not be paying the half share?
We're talking about this one right now. So yes.
Are there other sidewalks?
Huh?
Are there other sidewalk projects? Excuse me.
Yes.
There are other sidewalk projects besides this going on?
Yes.
So what you're saying, you want this as a special case for just this one neighborhood and you're not going to be able to justify that for the other neighborhoods?
What I'm saying is that this is the only one that we're talking about right now. So that's, that's what I'm saying is for this. If there, when the other projects come up, I would be, I would feel the same way.
I think there's other sidewalks included into this, this resolution.
Could I just suggest, so we have a motion?
And there was a second.
And there was a second. Alder Jensen, I suggest if you, if you want to do something with that, you should offer that as an additional amendment.
See if this passes and then I'll do that.
Oh, okay.
Okay. Alder Person Haley?
I do think the Grant Street sidewalk is a good idea because we have that stub that just goes to nowhere. It's of no, no on any purpose except maybe the house in front of it. To speak to Alder Jensen's motion or proposed future amendment, I'd like to see that come through as an ordinance rather than, you know, rather than making this spur-of-the-moment decision.
Okay. Alder Person Bartlett?
Yeah, just to say what was said before about the policy, I know we've talked about it a lot. It's been reviewed at least twice a year since I've been on the council. And it's not perfect, but I think it is a good policy. It encourages walkability and bikeability for the city, tries to offer alternative modes of transportation. I think leaving sidewalks out of a whole area like this is exclusionary. It'll exclude people from disabilities who have, need help, assistance, or wheelchairs to get around, will not be able to really live in that area and get around if they want to take a stroll around the neighborhood. Elderly, we have lots of people in my neighborhood walk around with assistance and different methods. Without sidewalks would cause a lot of issues and I think we definitely need it. I think we also have heard the problems with the school system. We like to attract families with kids. When I moved here with my now-oldest daughter, we did look at a house in this area and there were other reasons as well, but part of it is we were looking for sidewalks so my kids could safely play in the front yard and walk and walk to the school bus and ride the bikes and rollerblade safely and not have to do it in the street. So I'm going to support this. I think it makes sense for this as a reasonable compromise for the wants of the neighborhood and the needs of the community. So I'm going to support it.
Alder Person Riley?
Thank you. I had my hand up before, but it's not. Okay, thank you.
Sorry.
I appreciate that. Hey, you know, the majority of people on this body think this policy stinks. I know that. I've had people tell me this policy stinks. It needs to change. And God knows, it stinks and it needs to change. We cannot have a one-size-fits-all for older neighborhoods like this. We simply cannot. It's ridiculous. So I did make a request of the chair of the Public Works Committee to perhaps present some thoughts, some revisions, some potential amendments to the policy, et cetera, some time ago, before the SIP vote. And that was flatly denied. And it was denied, I think, because councilperson, former councilperson Durantchuk had raised the issue and they were sick of it. And I get that. But I was not given that opportunity. So then I availed myself of the opportunity to marshal some opposition to this and get people to that SIP and to defund these sidewalks in this neighborhood. We had an overwhelming show of opposition to these sidewalks in this neighborhood. One aye, a bunch of nays and passionate nays and intelligent discussions about why they opposed it. Now, so bad policy. Why is that bad policy even worse in this neighborhood? I've kind of discussed it before, but I'll talk about it again a little bit. This neighborhood has existed as it is now for sixty, seventy or more years. No sidewalks. There's no vehicular traffic in this neighborhood. I mean, there's really, it's the people who live here. This is not a thoroughfare. This is a unique, bucolic, little community sitting there by itself that people love. People love to walk through it because it is different, because it is not scarred with sidewalks here, there, and everywhere. No vehicular pedestrian issues ever that I have ever heard of, ever seen. I've lived there for twenty years in that neighborhood. I've never seen a damn thing. Now, we defeated that on that night, seven to four, and we defunded these sidewalks, seven to four. All of a sudden last week, whoops, here it is again. Granted in a modified form, and I appreciate that, I do. However, why? You know, I have no idea why it was suddenly returning. Now, I have my suspicions as to why, but I won't get into those. That was defeated. So now we've defeated it twice and addressed it twice and debated it twice. Now, I guess one of the alleged justifications perhaps for that having come back last week was the policy again. The policy that most of us acknowledge stinks. The policy that should not be applied everywhere. The policy that this body has the authority and the discretion to apply. If we don't do that, then Mr. Shiel can run the city, all right? Because you don't need us. The policy's written. He's a smart guy. He can read that policy. He can apply it. What the heck are we doing here? Why are we bothering, honestly? You know, and with respect to this neighborhood again, the length of time, the fact that there's no need for it given the traffic, the fact that there was overwhelming opposition to it from the constituents and the neighborhood itself. They are neither needed, they are not wanted. It is environmentally irresponsible. There are persons on this, in this body who sincerely have concerns about climate change. I've heard them. I believe they are sincere. Why do you want to place slabs of cement instead of having grass, plant life, trees? Slabs of cement in this area, scarring the neighborhood, adding to runoff instead of CO2 soaking plant life, lawns, et cetera. I don't, I don't understand it at all. It is economically reckless. We have no money. We can't fund a full-time position for our library. There's our library director right there. He tried to get some money for, to full-time staff, a person who's half-time staff. Nope. Don't have it. Can't afford to pay our staff what we'd like to pay. Nope. Don't have it. Can't pay our workers what we would like to pay them. Nope. Can't do it. We have streets in this community that look like a damn war zone and that feel like it when you drive on it. There are plenty of other places this money could go than here, again, where it is not needed and where it is not wanted at all. I do have some questions I would like to ask of Director Shiel, please, with respect to this project, if I may. Okay?
Yeah, if you could just direct the questions to the chair and?
All right. Thank you. All right. I would like Director Shiel to tell this body if he can guarantee that the mature trees that are in the path of this sidewalk and that we'll try to work on, he's guaranteeing that those mature trees will not be lost.
Of course not.
Thank you. Because the last time we were here, councilperson Reeves said she changed her vote because she was confident that the trees would be fine. He can't guarantee that. Can you guarantee they won't be damaged by the installation of these sidewalks? Can he guarantee they won't be damaged by the installation of these sidewalks? Same answer?
I can't guarantee.
Thanks. I appreciate that. I appreciate the honesty. I'm curious, how, if the plan for this, these sidewalks, how wide is the terrace? Are you going to put in a terrace? Is he going to put in a terrace? Sorry, I'm getting this wrong. You are?
Yes.
How wide?
I believe it's nine feet.
Nine feet terrace? How wide the sidewalks?
Five.
Fourteen feet. I have a little visual aid here I would like to share with some of you. It is a picture of the, if I can find it. Here it is. I'm going to, if you pass this around, please, for me to even start. Brett? Start with you, Lisa.
Sorry.
Thank you. And one for the other side. Tim? Pass this over to the other side. That is a picture of the mature tree at the bottom of Grant Street and town. Distance between the curb and the base of that tree is seven feet. It's seven feet. What are we talking about here total? Again, I didn't write it down. Could you repeat it for me, please, Director Shiel? The total width with terrace and sidewalk?
Total right-of-way width is sixty-six feet. The street right-of, the street is thirty-seven, is twenty-nine feet.
Right.
And then you have a five-foot sidewalk on that side.
Tell me what the terrace is again, please.
I don't have, I, I'll calculate it, but I don't have it. My finger jumps out.
Did you say ten feet before, I thought?
I said, I said nine, I thought.
Nine feet. Okay. And the sidewalk, five feet, right? Fourteen feet. You got seven feet from the curb to that tree. And if you're going to plan possibly, although you've already said you can't guarantee it's going to be saved, you've got to plan possibly to go around it. How far are you going on to that property owner's lawn? If you have to go on the inside of it? Do you need it? Does somebody have a picture, the picture, so he can look at it?
I'm looking at a plan sheet on the screen.
Oh, cool.
It was conceptualized by the engineer to go around the tree, not onto private property.
I, I mean, I'm sorry.
It was conceptualized by the engineer to go around the tree, not onto private property.
I, I mean, I'm sorry. If you look at that picture, can you give me an idea? Do you have the picture, Director?
I have it up. I'm the one who put it there.
No, 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 I'm talking about the picture that I have just handed out. Do you have that? Can you take a look at that, please?
So I guess you don't think it's gonna fit? Is that the suspicion?
I'm thinking they're gonna take, they're gonna need police power by the time they're done with this lawn.
I don't believe that's the intent.
Allow me to, allow me to-
Can I finish my, Mayor?
He's trying to answer your question.
Go ahead, Rodney, I apologize, the mayor was interrupting.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. No, just wait a minute. Respect the Chair.
All right.
Let him answer your question.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, we need to maintain some order here.
The tree that was shown before was not the one that's in your photo. The one that's in your photo is in the center of the screen on, up there. And it's proposed to be behind the tree. The sidewalk's proposed to snake behind the tree, yeah, in that location, and not encroach onto private property.
Well, sir, this, Rodney, the picture I'm showing you, just for the sake of clarification, is the house that is on the corner of Grant and Taff.
Yeah, that's, that's his house.
That's that house. And so are you going to be shrinking the street substantially to avoid it, or what are you doing? I can't tell.
The terrace, quite a bit.
I'd like him to answer.
It's not shrinking the street. Thirty-seven feet back-to-back is the curb, the curb distance, so.
Okay. Now, there's been, I think we have a similar issue that I'm concerned about with the tree that's on the corner of Grant McKinley. There is a full eleven feet there, from approximately eleven feet from the curb to the base of that tree. And there's no room to go around it on the inside, that's for sure. But anyway, so I have concerns about that tree and whether or not that tree is gonna stay. I have greater concerns about the first tree I've showed you here. And you've already advised that you will not guarantee these trees are not going away, and you will not guarantee they're not gonna be damaged, which I think is important with respect to our consideration here. Now, there's been talk, I know in the past about, and I have another little visual aid, if you'll bear with me. There's been talk in the past about a partial sidewalk on Grant. That goes to nowhere. And that's, that is true. There is such a sidewalk. Took a picture of that sidewalk facing down Grant. And if you look at that picture, you will see that right now, if you were to extend that sidewalk, it's going to go right through that tree.
Is that the, up on the screen, is that the same one?
Thank you, yeah, good job. Appreciate it. Yes, that is it. And so if you look at it, it's gonna go right through that tree. Now, I'm sure, Director Shield, there are probably plans to somehow zigzag it out. I don't know if those plans have been developed yet. Is there any thought you'd just tear up that sidewalk and put grass there instead? The existing sidewalk, sir? Do you know?
I think the plan, the engineers have designed a plan to go around it.
Sure, and I apologize, I'm not good at reading whatever the heck that is. I mean, I can't tell whatever the heck that is. Let me just, if you can read it and interpret for me, please, Director Shield. Are you planning extending it from the point where it currently exists?
That plan does do that.
Okay.
This is Mr. Dible's driveway right here.
That's correct. Yes, sir.
And it would continue to utilize the terrace and the Park Row area and come out closer to the street at this location.
So it's kinda, is it gonna be like a right turn, or is it gradual zigzaggy, or what are we doing there? And again, I apologize, just that I'm not good at reading that stuff. Sorry, Regina, I don't read that as well as you do.
Well, I think if you see the curvilinear lines here, those are representative of the sidewalk that's planned to be placed there.
Okay. What, I've seen nothing yet, since this has come back, as to the cost. What's the cost we're talking about here? How much are we talking? For this?
I don't have it at my fingertips for your-
It hasn't been bid out yet.
Okay, so we don't know the cost. We're doing this without knowing the cost.
Do you mind if we let somebody else go and come back to you?
No, 'cause I have one last thing and then I'm done.
One last thing, okay.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the-
Sure.
-consideration. Now, I received a letter, as did most of the people in my neighborhood. I have it here in my hand, inviting all of us to an open house, Thursday, February thirteenth, one day away in essence, six PM, Stoughton Fire Station. This open house will cover the following street projects, blah, 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 blah. You get to Grant Street reconstruction. And what this tells everybody is that the City Council has approved a deviation from our sidewalk installation policy, and no new infill sidewalk will be installed on Grant Street from Prospect to Taff Street. So right now, everybody's been advised, this isn't gonna happen. But tonight, we're considering changing that, and they're not gonna know that. And this is a body that I think has tried to be more transparent. And this is a body that has tried to involve the public more than what we had before. But we have told them this isn't gonna happen, and tonight, it may happen, they're not gonna know. This is, this might be the worst of it to a degree, right here.
I think that was sent out after the previous meeting-
Yes.
...where the vote. And as of this second, that's still accurate.
It is still accurate. But what my point is this, Mayor, if I may. If it's not accurate after this vote, then nobody's gonna know that. But they were advised it's something that is inaccurate. That's my point, Mayor. That, I think, let me look at my notes, and I will, I will be, I will be done. So let me summarize. No guarantee these trees are gonna be okay. No idea what the cost is going to be of this thing. And the public's gonna have, in essence, or at least the people later are gonna be misled. So those are three of the things I have concern about. Thank you, I'm done.
All right, thank you. All the person Hirsch was waiting.
Yeah, I had a, it's a long list. First, to go back to all the person Jensen, which I originally wanted to comment on your new ordinance. I do agree that we need to revisit it. I think it should be done not on a fly, like tonight. I think we all have a problem with that. But I think, I really, if it goes to planning or whoever is the Public Works that deals with it, I challenge Public Works, who's ever in charge of that, to put that on their agenda and so that we can get this resolved before next year. Second, I think it's kinda bullying to think that Director Shield can guarantee anything about safety of a tree. He's doing the best he can. It's not in his job description to say that he can guarantee that it's a liability issue to say something that he can't possibly do. So I commend you for stating what is possible and that you're trying, and it looks like you're trying the best you can, but you cannot guarantee anything in life. And to put on record that you can guarantee it only leads to lawsuits, so I commend you on that one. And, and also, I guess, after all this discussion for many times, I guess I'd like to call the question. And just, I think we've heard enough. I think we have other things on the agenda and that we need to vote and get this on its way.
That's a motion to call the question?
Yes.
So I need a second?
Second.
Second, by all the person highly, that takes a two-thirds vote. And I don't think it's debatable.
Okay, correct.
Okay, all in favor of calling the question, say aye.
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 Those opposed to calling the question, say no.
No.
We'll do a real call on the question.
Caravelo?
I can't ask a question at this point, can I?
No.
No, you can't. Oh, you just did.
Sorry.
How did you just vote, if I may ask for clarification?
Sorry?
How did you just vote, if I may ask for clarification?
This is a, this is a vote on a motion to close debate. So if it's adopted, there's no more debate, and you vote on the motion.
We just said aye or no, and I'm just asking which one he just said.
Oh, I said aye. But. I'll let it stand.
Write it down.
I'll let it stand.
They need it.
Aye?
Yeah.
Doom?
No.
Hiley?
Aye.
Hirsch?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Legaki?
No.
Mieski?
Aye.
Reeves?
Aye.
Riley?
No.
Schumacher?
Aye.
Bartlett?
Aye.
Boersma?
No.
That motion carries on a vote of eight to four.
Two-thirds, right? Okay. All right, so that means we-
I have a motion on the floor.
I have a question about what we're voting on.
We just closed debate.
So now it's, now the vote is on the amendment, which is to go back to the original resolution, street on west side of Grant Street.
Right, and we have to go right to the question? Because we've already closed debate?
No more debate.
No more debate. Your arm's gonna get tired.
This is, this is ridiculous.
Yes.
Thank you.
I, I don't know what to say. The motion passed to close the debates, we have to vote on the question. Does everybody understand what the question is?
I had my hand up before that motion.
I'd like you to repeat what we're voting on, please.
Could you?
Sure.
I had my hand up before Regina made that motion.
Voted on it, though.
Doesn't matter, there was a motion made, a second, and it voted on. Now the council has decided to end the debate.
Well, I wasn't recognized.
Well, you wouldn't be recognized because there was a motion.
I had my hand up before she made the motion. I object to this.
That's, that's how it works with Robert.
Because I had my hand up to make a comment about this whole thing before the motion was made. And I was not recognized by the Chair.
Just, I will make one point.
I tried to recognize it in the order that I saw it, and all the person Hirsch was recognized. In fact, could argue she should have been recognized before all the person Riley.
I had my hand up before.
Once she recognizes and makes a motion, and it gets a second, we vote on the motion, it passes, that's it. That's just how the rules work. So.
Cut me off right from the get-go.
Respectfully calling a point of order, please, if we could move to the vote.
Sure.
Respectfully.
And we're gonna read the motion.
The motion was to go back to the original resolution, which would be to inside sidewalks, to inside sidewalks on the west side of Grant Street.
Okay. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed of the motion, say no.
No.
Real call. Doom?
No.
Hiley?
Aye.
Aye.
Jensen?
Pass.
Legaki?
No.
Mieski?
Aye.
Reeves?
Aye.
Riley?
No.
Schumacher?
No.
Bartlett?
Aye.
Boersma?
No.
Caravelo?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
That motion carries on a vote of seven to five.
Now, the original resolution is before you. It continues to be debatable.
I'm not gonna bother.
Tell how you understood it?
That was a, that was a motion to amend the pending motion. So now the main motion is before the body again.
Okay. Does everybody understand that before? Okay. So what we just voted on was to basically amend the motion that had been approved. Is that right?
Yes.
So now we have, the new motion is the motion that included the Grants Street sidewalks. 'Cause we just passed the amendment to add that back into that emotion.
Which means all the person Boersma, now you can say something.
Yes.
Am I recognized?
Yes, you are recognized. Thanks for your patience.
Okay, so here's, here's the situation. I think this is folly. If we go with a policy that's on the board right now, we're going to be, we're going to be doing sidewalks on both sides of the street in all the neighborhoods, and this is crazy. This is just folly. My, I bought, I took a bunch of pictures today, and I just wanted to go through these. I gave them to Jamin, and he's, Rodney, and they're gonna go with me with, through these. You've seen some of these from Alder Riley. That is a picture of going down the street from, and into the, the street question that is gonna go right directly through that tree. That, that goes by the Dible's house and is right in front of the Dible's house. The measurements that I took today is that they're in front of the Dible's house, which I think is probably the next slide, I'm not sure. That is a five-and-a-half-foot sidewalk, fourteen feet from the street, going right up to their entrance into their home. That is, that is so different than what is, what we're doing right now. We don't put sidewalks right up against the street. If we go, if we extend that sidewalk all the way to Taff Street, that is going to be, that is going to be a crazy-looking situation on the sidewalk. It's, I, I think it's cockamamie, actually, if we have to go around that tree. And, and, and what chance is that they're gonna be to save that beautiful tree, actually? It's, it's a big oak. And ultimately, if we wanted to, if we wanted to actually make this look good, it would be to put the sidewalk much closer to the street, tearing out the sidewalk in front of the Dible's street, the Dible's house, to be able to make that work. To make it look consistent to the, to any other part of the city, you're not going completely around that tree. It's just not gonna work. And it's way too, it's way too close to that house. It is, it's way too far from the, from the road. Basically, what you should be doing is you should tear out that sidewalk all the way up the street, all the way to Prospect Street, and make it a consistent sidewalk that would go right along the side. Now, I don't think that people would want us tearing out their sidewalk right in front of their street, but it would certainly make much more sense. So, next slide.
How many are there?
This is, this is a, this is a tree that's, that's, that's another tree that probably would be damaged if that sidewalk goes right toward the street side of that, of that tree. The house you're looking at is a Riley house, right there. And next slide? So this is, this is a, this is also the Riley house, and it goes, we're going down the, the street, basically going past his house for a great distance with, but we haven't, we haven't gotten to the trees that are in question on the, on the, right next to his house. So next slide. This is, this is, this is basically right in front of the Riley house. And there's another house down the street, and we'll get to that the next, next slide. So these are trees. They're not huge trees, and I'm not sure the, it's winter time, so I can't judge which trees. But there are at least three or four trees that are going to be affected by this. If you're gonna have a sidewalk on that street, on Grant Street right there, you're gonna go right up to the curb. If you, if you're gonna, there's no other way to do it. You can't go, you can't go on the, on the left side, as we're looking at, the left side of that, the, those trees. You have to go right up against the curb, and that's something that we don't wanna do. It's just not, it's not feasible for us to be able to do that. It's gonna be a winding cockamamie sidewalk all the way down, completely down to Taff Street. So next slide. So that's, that's, that's the tree on the very end of Taff Street that happened to be my car. And there, and then, I don't know if I have a picture of it, but on the very, very end of that street, one has to cross the street to get to another sidewalk. It just seems to me to be folly for us, what we're doing. Now, the, now the real folly of this thing, if we keep this policy in effect, and you go on the other side of that street, you're going to be, you're gonna, you're gonna be going into an incredibly crazy situation. If we have sidewalks on both sides of the street, which we now have as a, as a policy, and if we don't change that policy, it's just, it's folly for us. We can't do it. So I, those are my pictures. I wanted to make sure that people knew that we're not just talking about one, one tree that's gonna be affected. We're talking about a number of trees that are gonna be affected. And if, and I've had some experience with trees with, with roots being damaged. We're gonna destroy potentially five or six very hardy trees. And I think that that's just not right for us to do. I don't think we should be doing it this way, and we should- should be doing it this way, and we should have a policy that is going to be, it's gonna be consistent, that it's gonna allow for us to be able to have a decent policy, where we don't have to stick with this crazy notion, which we've been trying to change for years, of sidewalk on both sides. It's just not, okay, so if we, if we don't, if we don't go with that policy, then let's go with sidewalks on both sides through all the streets, make no exceptions, let's do it. But, but that's folly. It's just folly. So I, that's my, that's my little statement.
So, I have a number of people, they have their hands up, and just for clarification, that the motion on the table is to put sidewalks just on the one side of the street. The recommendation was to deviate from the policy, to not include any sidewalks on Sherman, and what was the other one? Prospect?
The north side of Prospect.
North side of Prospect, and then the east side of Grant. Is that right?
Correct.
So, right, so it's...
I present them, I still have the floor, I think I present a motion, an amendment, and that would be to have a, to have a, a moratorium on sidewalks on Grant Street until we get this situation straightened out. I think that until we get this policy figured out, we shouldn't be doing this. I think, I, I like the idea about the plans for the rest of the neighborhood, because I think they are very solid. I think we'd be taking out some sidewalks, we're gonna be, we're gonna be fixing the street, which really needs to be fixed. But I'd like a moratorium on just the issue of Grant, this Grant Street sidewalk going all the way from Prospect to Taft. That's my motion.
So that's an amendment to put a moratorium on. Is there a second?
Point of order?
Sure.
Would that, wouldn't that effectively just reverse the vote we just had, and would that be allowed?
Well, if I understand the motion, it's, it's, it's really a substitute in place of the motion that's before you, which is to approve a resolution that would say no trees on Prospect, or...
No sidewalk.
No sidewalk on Prospect, or...
Grant.
And, and on one side of Grant, and the other. As I understand, the motion is to say, as an alternative to adopting that motion, you're proposing a substitute motion, which is a moratorium just on Grant.
Just on Grant.
But that means you've got trees on the other streets, that...
You, you sidewalks.
I mean sidewalks on the other streets.
You have, you have what Rodney's plan, what the, potentially the developments plan is to have exactly what we had talked about, which was, we know nothing on Sherman, all the stuff we've talked about in this neighborhood up to this date, but have a moratorium on Grant Street until we can get this crazy policy straight, figured out.
Is it your intent that if that moratorium, if that is approved, then what's your intent with respect to the status of the pending motion?
The pending motion for everything else is okay to have, but not, not to have, not to be fooling around with sidewalks on Grant Street.
So then I think Alder Person Hailey has a good point. Then you're, all you're really saying is, you just want to re-vote on what was already decided, which was to add, to amend, to amend the pending motion to revert to the original resolution, which is a sidewalk on one side of Grant Street. Now you want to vote on that same issue again, to say sidewalk on neither side of Grant Street. So that would be a motion to reconsider, which can only be made by someone who voted with the prevailing party on that.
To be very respectful of you, Matt.
Yep.
I am not presenting that motion. I am presenting a motion for a moratorium on, on doing this Grant Street sidewalk plan on Grant Street. It's a moratorium vote. It's not a vote to reconsider. It's a vote for a moratorium on Grant Street. I think I have a right to make that motion.
Then I, then I understand that to be a substit, you're, you're asking that a substitute to the, to the resolution be voted on, as a complete alternative to the resolution.
Absolutely.
Which would mean, if adopted, there would be a moratorium on sidewalks on Grant Street, but the existing policy would continue to apply with respect to the other streets in the neighborhood, meaning you'd have sidewalks on the other streets. That's how I understand that motion.
My motion was to have a moratorium only on Grant Street, and that the, that, until we can get this thing straightened out, and that the rest of the plan that Rodney presented would, would go forward. So we're not holding it back.
I think it's equivalent of what we just voted on.
It's a moratorium on Grant Street.
So was the other motion. The other motion was the same thing, was to not include Grant Street, so, and we've already taken that vote. So...
You know, and, and I guess, I guess we've had partial, Matt has partially addressed that, but I think a moratorium vote on, on one, the one street is not to say that we'll never put a Grant Street sidewalk, but a moratorium until we can get this thing straightened out. That's my motion.
So, really, I mean, what am I ruling on here?
You're ruling on whether that motion is in order.
I don't believe it is in order. It's already been called by a council member, and I don't think it's in order because we've already taken that vote, unless somebody that was on the prevailing side of that vote wanted to reconsider that. And I haven't heard anybody that did vote for that, offer a reconsideration on that. So I'll move on. I have, Alder Person Reeves was next.
A couple of points. I, most of you know I am very much a tree hugger. I'm probably, I mean, that has been one of my major concerns. I do know, in our neighborhood specifically, I've seen a lot of very large trees. Sidewalks have gone around them. I actually like a windy sidewalk, better than straight. If I had my druthers, I'd love windy, but obviously that's not practical. And I think the, because I have, you know, I have concerns about the trees, and I really hemmed and hawed and said, you know, I'm really crossing my fingers. And actually, two days after we voted last time, there was a gentleman with mobility issues in my neighborhood, and he had to take a different route because some of the people have not cleared their sidewalks, those, what's it called when the, the corner, is it curb and gutter?
The ramp.
The ramp, okay. And so he had to take a different route. He ended up taking the fall, had to call 911, and I just, I really see what happens when people with mobility issues cannot access the neighborhood. And with all due respect to the people that are living there, you are not going to live there forever, and there could be somebody with mobility issues. I'm not for putting sidewalks on every side of the street necessarily. I'm for getting out of the car and taking a look. We still have latitude in the policy, even though it's, right now the policy as written and followed is on both sides, but we have that latitude, and we've done that already with several others. So, you know, I really, after that happened, I really solidified that I really do think, on this particular spot, it made sense to me, that we need to be mindful of people that might be living there and trying to commute through there. Maybe they're not there today, but they could be next week or in several months, and so I think this one made sense to me, and I'm okay with it.
Thank you. So I have President Mieski, and then we're going this way. So it goes to Alder Person Hailey, Bartlett, and then Caravello, and then we'll go back over here.
First thing, I'm gonna say something to add on to what Lisa said. When I was working with the state, did a lot of ADA inspections, and I'll tell you one thing that holds true for everybody. At some point in your life, you will be disabled, and you will need to have the amenities that are afforded to you by the ADA laws. That being said, I'm kinda distressed by this whole, this whole discussion, this whole issue. Some of the members who have spoken already, I've served with on the Public Works Committee. I've been on the Public Works Committee for quite a number of years, on and off. And what I say to Alderman Riley, what he doesn't understand is he hasn't trusted the process. The process is, and has worked in the past. Nobody likes the policy, but you know what? The policy has to start somewhere. The policy does work, and as Alder Reeves said, we have latitude with it. How does our, how does it work? Every year, the planning director comes to us at Public Works and says, here's our projects, there's going to be projects in here that I see, I foresee problems, and we need to discuss these. So we put, so the, the chair of the Public Works puts it on the, on the calendar, and interestingly enough, this street came up two years ago. And Alderman Boersma was on that committee, and we discussed all of this. And with very, it was a long, it was a long talk, and one of the things that came out of it was that we would save as many trees as possible, and we directed the director to, whenever, whenever he possibly could, to actually go around trees, as long as he, they had to stay in the public right of way to do that. After that point in time, there's usually a public hearing. Public hearings, community, the, community comes to it, mostly neighborhood people who are, who are directly connected to it, and they 'll make comments to it, and they make more adjustments to it. You didn't allow that to happen. You didn't allow the process to take place. You didn't allow the, you didn't allow the, the city to perform its duties and to give it a chance to give you a, a decent, well-designed, well-thought-out plan. This plan, you know, started out with the policy where we would have had wholesale carnage of a, of a neighborhood. What we ended up with after, afterwards, what's presented to you right now, is a rather logical, well-thought-out compromise that allows a connection to the rest of the, to the rest of the community, and allows for an ADA passageway. So with that, I will, I will vote for this, and I will vote for it with all my heart, because it, it needs to be done.
Alder Person Hailey?
I don't think I have anything to add, except that I hope we can wrap this up. When an average citizen has, is directly affected by a sidewalk or an assessment or something, construction in their neighborhood, they have three minutes at these meetings to air their grievances. And we've, we've now spent something like three, four hours on this singular sidewalk now.
Pauline, a question?
Alder Person Bartlett was up.
Yeah, I just wanna respond to some of them. I am chair of Public Works, obviously, and I did deny when Alder Riley came and asked to talk to this, because we had just covered it multiple times before that, and there was no new language brought forward. So I didn't feel we'd get anywhere with it. I, I know, he says people think it stinks. This policy is a good one. It's not perfect. It, it's something that can be applied fairly to the entire community, and we don't have poli, we don't write policy just for individual neighborhoods. We write them for the entire communities. So they have to be fairly applied, and this one gives us leeway to make exceptions, which we have, I think, every year since I've been on here, to sidewalks and a, and other retaining walls when it's come, when it's been a reasonable, common sense move. We have done that, absolutely. So the process works. If we talk through it and get there, I think this isn't a reasonable compromise to get there. I would also say that the ones that, if there are people that say it stinks, I've been on the city council three years now, and I commend Alder Duranzik. She's the only one I've ever seen bring language forward for revisions of this. No one else has, even though now they're saying it stinks and needs to be changed at this minute. Alder Boersma has been on this council, Public Works, for multiple years, and never brought language forward. He was supportive of this plan last time we talked to it. It's, it definitely his right. There's no problem with changing your mind. That's your right, absolutely. So, but we've talked about this many times in the past, and this was a good compromise, I thought we'd come with to the Public Works. But the argument that this neighborhood's been like this for sixty-seven years, sixty, seventy, times change. You have to change with them. There's different demographics we're trying to attract to the city. There's different needs to the community. The climate change, this neighborhood is a perfect neighborhood for walkability to downtown, to our business area. If someone wanted to do less transportation by vehicle, which is one of the most, one of the major causes of climate change and CO2 emissions is what gasoline and petrol fuel transportation. Well, more walkability, more bikability is one solution to help with that. Give them options to walk, and this is a perfect neighborhood for that, for the distance to schools, distance to downtown, distance to businesses in our business park. So I would be all for that. So I'm gonna support this, as I've stated before. If anyone wants to make revisions, bring them to the Public Works any time, because when people just say they want us to discuss it, we don't know what you're wanting, and so we don't pick it up again. So, thank you.
Now I have Alder Person Caravello, and then Hirsch.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just had a couple of things that I wanted to address, which, one is regarding what, what Alder Reeves brought up, which is similar projects to this that sidewalks had to detour around existing trees that were there if we had similar successful projects in town where that has taken place, and it sounds like we have, and there are examples where this has worked. Another thing I wanted to address, actually, is what Alder Riley brought up regarding the notice to the neighborhood about this project, which I'm guessing the neighborhood would simply be re-noticed.
This is a public open house that's taking place on Thursday. There isn't an opportunity to send another clarification of that statement, because it's two days from now. That was, as Mayor indicated, that was directed, that was sent out the days after the last council meeting. And there, that was correct, the time was sent out. I'd expect that we'd still see the neighbors attend this meeting. I don't know if they wouldn't attend just because of that one statement. Maybe they would, but we're hoping for great participation, civil participation.
But there's, there's no way, since it, on that notice, it does state that there will not be getting sidewalks on that street.
How many notices were sent out? Do you know off the top of your head?
Every budding property owner of the project area was sent to direct mailing. Obviously, there's representatives from the neighborhood that can make door-to-door contact if they feel that would be appropriate for Thursday's open house.
Okay. Yeah, I guess that's something I'd like to, you know, even though I guess it, it really is primarily three or four property owners that are directly affected, if I'm counting correctly. Another thing, it's just one observation from, since this has been on my mind, and I've walked through the neighborhood a couple of times now. The most recent time was actually yesterday morning, or, eh, I guess it was around noon or so, and since yesterday was a little bit of a sloppy day. And I was walking in the street when a car passed me, it threw slushy stuff at me, because I was not on the sidewalk. I was walking in the street where the cars go. So...
Wasn't Alder Person Riley, was it?
It was not Alder Person Riley. It was indeed not. Those are, those are my comments. I think sidewalks should be on this, on that side. I, actually, another reason is because it's arguably, or not really arguably, a safe route to school for some of the kids in that neighborhood to go up Grant Street on their way to River Bluff, I would imagine. So, that's all I've gotta say.
Alder Person Hirsch?
Um, thank you. First to kinda go back with what Alder Person Caravello was saying. If this motion does pass tonight and it's changed, I'd like to direct the staff to send out an amendment to that community and maybe have another meeting, because I do agree with Alder Caravello. I know it's, it's more time, but it is to be part of being transparent and not being, being appeared that we're trying to do something shady or underhanded. I, I think that public perception is key, and we would need to have another public meeting just for that neighborhood, or for that street, or whatever, because I think it is important that they are informed if this does pass. Second thing, to reiterate, in my neighborhood, just like in District Two, it's fun walking around streets where they have saved big trees, and the sidewalk does go around them. And just two years ago, on Good Jerks, and I can never say that word, they saved a whole slew of, how do you call them? Arborvitae, that were, that were gonna be in the way, and we worked around it. They put up a retaining phone. We adjusted the apron a little bit, and it looks great, and the guy is really happy, and they actually, you know, people actually admit that, yes, that yes, for seventy years, they never had sidewalks there and by Joe, people do actually use those sidewalks now. Where everybody always called and said, oh, they'll never use it. Nobody walks. So how do you know unless there's a sidewalk? And so the argument that nobody will ever use it is, we, I get that call every single year when we have this and people usually come back and go, you know, I was wrong. People do use the sidewalks now that they're there. And so again, as I reflect what, you know, President Mijesci says, this is for the whole community. Sidewalks are for the whole community, not just for a neighborhood, for people to get from one place to the other. And if we do really want to encourage, like our comprehensive plan had asked in that questionnaire, people want a wa, walkable, bikeable community. And this is one way to get there and it's a great compromise because instead of using the policy verbatim, we are actually amending it so it can be tailored to this neighborhood so it doesn't go on the other side of the street where there's trees. So I think it's a great compromise and I commend Public Works and Director Shiel for actually being very thoughtful and very, you know, way to get this in with this community. So, that's all I have to say.
All right. So I had Alder Person Riley and then Alder Person Legaki, not in any necessary order here. Who wants to go first?
I'll defer to Alder Person Legaki.
I'm a little bit dismayed in learning, still in my first year here, but I am dismayed and a bit disappointed in, in, in the process of this. When you have, so I face dilemmas and difficult decisions quite frequently that are about life and death. And when the rights of the disability and having a strong background and advocate of having worked and lived in group homes, as well as a great love of the environment and sustainability and, and historic neighborhoods, they are competing. And I just find that when I go back to when we first were in the budget process and the neighborhood turned out and what they had to say, that clarified it for me. They live there. I know that areas must be safe for all. But when I look at our city and, and, and I walk with my dogs all the time down Riverside Drive and people fly on that. We have numerous areas that are of a problem and we're inconsistently and I know that this policy is meant to try to get to uniformity, but look at the process we went to get here, to be right back at the very beginning where we were three weeks ago. And what about those people that spoke? So I don't know when I, I'm going to stay consistent on my vote. That I, I believe that this is an exception and until we get, until we get a better policy and the procedures around this, this has come here three times, I think it's pretty lousy that it went that way. I'm talking about the process, but those competing values are, are very important. But I, I would like to see us really work the language on this policy. And I was disappointed to hear only Alder Duranzik has offered language. When sidewalks have been this huge thorn in our side. So on that, I guess I just wanted to, to respect and know these sides and, and they're all important. But this process has been dismaying and a bit troubling.
Thank you. Alder Person Riley?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I want to thank the body for indulging me twice on this, for listening to me and for voting properly in my mind, twice. Thank you for that. Um, I want to thank Alder Person Legaki for those comments. I think they were wonderful. I want to thank Councilperson Doom for sticking with me on this because I think his vote is right. I want to thank Councilperson Boersma for the same and Councilperson Schumacher for the same. I want to thank Councilperson Jensen, half, for his vote tonight and I do appreciate it. I do have one, I, I, there's just a couple of comments that were made that I, I just, I, I feel I need to address, if I may. One, President Mijesci, did you, were you saying I somehow didn't allow the, I didn't understand what you were saying, sir? I, I wasn't sure if that's what you were trying to say.
No, I was, I was saying that your original, when, when you originally came forth with this.
Right.
Way back when.
The SIP?
What's that?
The SIP project? You weren't here, but yeah, go ahead.
You did not allow, you didn't unders, you didn't understand how this, how we go about designing these streets and how we went about.
Sure.
Going this, and how we modify the policy to allow for natural inconsistencies that, that's what I meant by it.
Thank you. I appreciate that clarification. Listen, the thing here is, is that I did ask and I did ask if I could address that committee and I did ask if I might get, bring them some ideas that we might do with this policy and I was told, drop dead, basically. So to suggest that somehow or another, well, nobody tries, nobody cares, nobody said, you know, nobody wants to do anything, I didn't get that opportunity. Now it doesn't matter anymore, but I want that clear because that is what I did and I was told, forget it. I do still have concerns and thank you, Alder. I, I have real concerns that these people all have bad information and they're not going to get good information before Thursday. None of them. So I think that's a problem and I think that's a problem possibly due process council, perhaps. And I think it's a real problem with our transparency and I'm surprised that we're still going to go through with this. Finally, Alder Person Riley, um, one of the reasons we've taken so much time on this, sir, is, is that it goes away, it comes back. It goes away, it comes back. So that's, you know, that's been the process here for God knows what reason. So anyway, that's, I just wanted to make those points. Um, thank you. Can I register a no on the next one? The special assessments vote, the R, or do we have to call first and I'll register my no because I'm going to be taking my leave of, of this place and I'll be in touch with Holly. Can I register a no in advance? If not, then I won't vote on.
I think you have to be here to vote.
Okay, well.
At the committees, you can call in, but at the council, you have to be here.
How long do, well.
We're just about wrapped up here. Did you have something you want to add?
I just wanted to respond to that last comment because Alder Riley also said in October at the SIP that he would take a crack at revising this language. It's four months later. We've seen nothing. If you want to send it to the committee, I await it. We're, we're happy to look at it.
That's interesting.
Bring this thing forward last time, so I just want to get that clear.
Excuse me. May I answer that just quickly?
We're not going to get into a debate over what happened and didn't happen.
You told me I couldn't do it. That's all I'm going to say. Holly, I'll be in touch. Thank you.
Alder Person Boersma?
Yeah, I just want to clarify something. I've been on Public Works since I've been on council and we have always made it work by the skin of our teeth. Basically, we've made exceptions. We made exceptions on issue. I remember, I remember basically what Public Works did a number of years ago was to direct Rodney that he should have some contact with folks in the community and, and, and make some good sort of decisions, bring them back to us. And I think he has been doing that, but I, part of why I think we need to have a resolution of this issue somehow. And I was hoping that Alder Riley would be able to present a, a good, a good and solid plan as, as Duranzik did to not to have to adhere to sidewalks on both sides. So I, I kind of feel bad that people say that I, I complain about it, but I didn't, but I haven't done anything. I certainly have done a lot of stuff on Public Works to, and a lot of it has been to make exceptions to the rule so we can actually work with this policy that has been in place for so long that it's, it wasn't passed in our generation. It was passed way, way long ago. And ultimately, the policy right now is to have sidewalks on both sides of streets in Stoughton and we need to change that. And however that happens, we've got to get it done. That's my.
All right. Well, um, I think we're at a point. We have a motion that was amended to include the Grant Street sidewalks on the west side. So that's what we're voting on.
So if we're voting.
Resolution in the packet.
Right. So, so if we vote yes, that means sidewalks on Grant Street. If we vote no, it means no sidewalk. I just want to make sure that everybody's clear.
Well, if you vote no.
If you vote no, there are sidewalks on both sides of every street in the neighborhood. That's what you need to know because voting yes means to, it's a vote to approve a deviation from the policy to say no streets in some areas, but yes, one street on one, or no sidewalks on some streets, a sidewalk on one side of Grant Street. That's the approval. If you vote no and this resolution is adopted, then it's the policy prevails.
Okay, so you want to vote yes on the, I, I guess now I'm even more confused.
Well, the original, the original resolution, can, do you have that in front of you, Rodney? Let's just make sure, because I think the original resolution had the deviations in it.
This is, this is basically the original resolution is what.
Which is in the packet.
So if you want it, the sidewalks to side Grant Street, you say yes.
Yeah.
If you say no, then you get rid of.
Then we start all over again.
Yep. Then, okay. And the existing policy of sidewalks being on both sides of the street is the one that holds sway until a new resolution comes forward.
It defaults to the, to the original policy.
Right.
Okay. Does everybody understand that?
I sure hope so.
Okay. Uh, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed to the motion, say no.
I'm abstaining. I disagree with the options.
That's fair. Okay, so we had, um, the motion carries with one abstention. All right. You guys want to keep going or do you need a break? We only have two items left. They should go.
That was the vote on the amendment.
No, we already had voted on the amendment.
That was it.
That was it.
That was it. We're done with that one. All right, we'll finish this up then. Uh, we have new business. R twenty-five of two thousand and twenty comes from Finance.
All right. R twenty-five, twenty twenty, preliminary resolution declaring intent to exercise special assessment powers for twenty twenty street and sidewalk projects. So moved.
Second.
Second by Alder Person Reeves. Alder Person Schumacher?
Um, this is the part of the process to get the, the special assessments for the sidewalks in there. And you can see the list on there. That includes one of them that we've just been talking about.
Okay. Anything you want to add?
Just to clarify, this puts in motion the process to put together the preliminary assessment schedule. And once that schedule's put in place, property owners are sent their preliminary assessment amount and public hearing information where a public hearing is held at the city council, at which time the city council will take action on the assessment schedule.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Here are none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed. That carries R twenty-six of two thousand and twenty comes from Utilities. Alder Person Hirsch, did you want to introduce that one?
Sure. Um, R twenty-six, twenty twenty, authorized and directing the proper city officials to approve the reallocation of twenty twenty wastewater utility capital improvement project funding and ISO move.
Second.
Second by Alder Person Jensen. Alder Person Hirsch?
I think I will just pass this down to the Director. Please.
Very good. Thank you. Um, just basically, this is not a, a budget addition in any way. It's just a reallocation. Through the design process on this, on particularly for Prospect, we recognize the opportunity to basically eliminate, eliminate the sanitary sewer that actually lives right next to the Yaha River. Very shallow clay interceptor sewer and actually place it in the street itself. And so that's what we're looking to do with this amendment to this change. Ultimately, it, there's two, two big consig, significant concerns with having that sanitary sewer next to the river. First is obviously being able to get there to maintain it. Very steep slope. But secondly is the environmental threat. This pipe has been there for at least since the nineteen fifties, if not earlier. It is clay. And so I've got significant concerns that if it is leaking, it would directly flow into the Yaha River. Further concern I have is that it may be a while before we'd even recognize that there would be that environmental threat. So definitely moving it to the street, giving the opportunity for that then to, and, and part of this project, it, it gets complicated quickly because it does cause us to have to reroute some of the sanitary sewer to accomplish this. But I, I mean, of the projects or I guess of the sanitary sewer sections that we have in the city, this is the one I would be the most concerned about because of that threat being so close to the river and how shallow it is and being clay.
Jill, um, because you're moving it from people's back of the house to the front of the house, what's the cost to the residents?
It's an excellent question. We talked through this quite a bit at the Utilities Committee and, and actually reached out to the city attorneys. What's the mechanism ultimately to require or what options do landowners have ultimately to connect to this new sanitary, abandon their lateral and then go to the street? Actually, our, our current ordinance is silent to that. So we actually worked with the city attorney to put together language that we would be bringing forward that will go to the Utility Committee to add to our ordinance. Basically giving people the option or the opportunity, I guess, to give time to connect. But ultimately with the idea that this sanitary sewer along the river would be abandoned unless there's an environmental threat. Unless we find that, yep, we are discharging to the river, there is, then that we would basically have a ninety-day provision for them to actually connect and that would be part of this new ordinance. But looking at basically a five-year opportunity for them to connect through. The one thing that I think is also significant with this location in particular is they also have lead services. So again, there's some opportunity here that we're going to have to work with those homeowners to get that changed out as well. Uh, again, we don't right now have an ordinance in place to direct that change out of lead services. But that's also something that we're going to need to look at pursuing a little bit more maybe to that. We are looking at a, an ordinance at the Utilities Committee right now to ultimately mandate the change in all those lead services. Two reasons why ultimately we are in a situation where we did have a lead exceedance. We do believe that we could probably sample ourselves back into a compliant state. But as we look out to the EPA, they are actually looking right now to reduce that threshold of exceedance. And so we're going to continue to put ourselves back into this situation. So we're going to be in a situation, we have to figure out a way to remove the lead from the system and address it that way.
Just to follow up, what is like the, if they all decide, if landlord decides to connect up front and it, I know it's probably going to cost, I, I'm just assuming a couple thousand dollars or whatever and because there hasn't been that much lead time, does it still apply like what we do with sidewalks or other costs that they can have, like a time period to pay it back? There doesn't have to be just this year? Do they have like a five-year plan or something to pay it back? So it's, because I think some of these guys, of course, these aren't the sidewalks we're just talking about hopefully. But I just don't want people to incur a lot of costs that is coming up and they haven't had time to prepare.
And right now there is no provision for a special assessment for the sanitary sewer. The sanitary, the lateral though, kind of to back up maybe is, the homeowner actually owns from the main into their home. But as far as whenever we're doing reconstruction projects, we actually always put the lateral all the way up to the right-of-way. Particularly for, because we've got so much ionized or clear water coming into our system. It's a way to basically to protect against that. It's a way to encourage really hopefully that the homeowner will replace that section. We don't have a lot of people that do, ultimately do that unless they have a failure. So there's not right now a special assessment provision to be able to do with a sanitary sewer. We are looking at the Utilities Committee as we can talk through that of having a, a special assessment provision though in place with the lead service replacement to give them the opportunity to have either a five-year or a ten-year window to be able to replace or pay that back through a special assessment.
And just to, if I could, just to make sure that's clear. So with the, with the sewer laterals, private lateral, the owner would get notice that they would need, at some point, ultimately they'd get notice that they would need to switch to the new sewer main and they would have to do that at their cost. If they didn't do it, then the city, then the city would end up having to come in and do it and then assess the cost as a special tax. And so that's the current kind of framework that, that would apply to that scenario.
Alder Person Reeves, did you have a question?
So I just wanted to clarify on the timeline. So as far as the, the sewer line, that is not going to be an option. They're going to have to hook into that and you're thinking within the next five years?
Within the next five years unless there's an environmental issue that would, that arises. Unless we get in a situation where, yes, we know we've got a discharge, obviously the utility will need to address that. But if we get in a situation where we're having discharge directly to the river, we'll make those immediate repairs. However, I actually heard a, a story, you know, at one point we had a tree fall over and we were out there with shovels and addressing that seventeen or so years ago. So we'll address that immediately, but if we're starting to see that failure of that. pipe, we will then put on notice that they would need to replace that more quickly.
And a, and a follow-up. So, it sounds like you may not know, it may be challenging to know if we're having issues. So, what, what inspections do you have in place? Because now it makes me nervous that it's...
It makes me nervous as well and, and actually come the spring, plan to walk that whole section. There is, my understanding is some of it's actually exposed on the ground, the sewer laterals. My understanding is some of those are exposed. Did talk with, or actually indirectly talked with a resident along there that is having issues with their lateral as well. But to, basically, we'll inspect it, walk it this spring, and we will also televise it and keep it on our televising program to keep a good handle as far as what the condition of that pipe is in.
So, you're fairly confident we wouldn't have a...
Right now, I'm, yes. Right now, I'm, but it, you're absolutely right. I have concerns there, just the age of that pipe, it being clay, being so close to the surface, being next to the river. But we'll definitely continue to monitor it.
Will you have a, a public meeting with all the people that are affected for that so they understand and what their options are and who to call to get those laterals changed and all that?
Absolutely. And, and we'll do that Thursday as well with the open house. We have been actually in communication because we needed to get into a number of these residents' basements to actually make sure that what we're designing along the street ultimately will connect, you know, by gravity into the sanitary sewer that we've got proposed there. So, we've been engaging with a number of residents. There's one resident in particular that has a lot of connection within that, that neighborhood, and he's also been reaching out to other people within, his other neighbors. So, we have been making those contacts. But to your point very much, yes, we'll be continuing to, need to engage with each of these landowners, even as we start to get into the whole lead issue. I mean, really, we're just kind of talking to them at this point, really on the sanitary side, but we'll be notifying them more on the lead issue as well and looking with them to make sure they fully understand what their situation is as we move this project forward.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Alder Person Schumacher?
Jill, is the river screened regularly for coliform bioburden?
I believe that it is to the extent that there's, I mean, we don't, I guess, I guess I can't speak to that directly. I guess I don't know that for sure. I know that on, you know, variety of different water bodies, there is certain level of screening. I think the challenge would be as far as the identifying exactly what the source would be. So, I, I'll, I'll say not to my knowledge.
Okay. Ask a question? Sure. President Mayewski?
This, this is kind of off, off the subject a small bit.
You bet.
You're concerned about this along the river. We have other utility pipes running at, on the top of the river bed at Forton and at bottom of Jefferson, and we are considering losing the dam. Are you concerned about that?
I'm not, actually, because we, when we directionally drill those underneath, and they're actually HDPE pipe, so I have less concerns as far as what, you know, with the removal of the dam, I don't have any concerns at this point in time, at least if I'm thinking about the same sections that you're talking about.
When you, when you stand them on, on the bridges, you can look down, you can see them.
Okay.
When, when the water level drops and you, they freeze, you're not concerned with anything like that?
If, again, they're the locations in which I think that they, we're talking, I don't just because of flow. But we may want to follow up and, and, but from what I understand, you're, I don't believe that, we just got significant flow with those being our interceptor sewers that I don't have concerns there.
All right. Okay. Any other questions or comments? So, we have a motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed? That carries.
Mayor?
Yes.
Question of clarification on Resolution 25?
Yes.
Just at the very bottom of it, the one, it was the one before this. It says adopted on roll call at a regular meeting of the common council. Does that mean it just was adopted at this meeting, or did we have to take a roll call vote on this particular resolution, given that it had to do with the special assessments and...
I'm not sure I know the answer to that. Do we need a roll call on a special assessment?
That language usually doesn't exist in our resolutions. That's special language there.
Not, not that I'm aware of, but honestly, I have not looked into that. I'm not certain.
I mean, it was unanimous, wasn't it?
It was unanimous.
Yeah.
Just wanted to let you know of that detail there.
All right. I think that's all we had, so we need a motion to adjourn. So, move.
Second.
I didn't hear who motioned it. It was so quick.
Flip a coin.
Was it?
Lisa.
Okay. Where was the second from? Alder Person Reeves? You guys are too quick for me. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None opposed? Thank you.